The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Coon, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Krusten, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Ortman, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Krusten. Nineteen present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Oscar Brown.
If you would center your mind just for a moment towards God, we would say a moment of prayer. Dear God, we thank you for this opportunity and this present to be here today, for it was not for you here that we would be here. We want to thank you for that. We want to thank you, God, how you blessed us to get out of bed this morning and find out we're yet in the land of the living. God, you've been good trips. We want to thank you for it. We want to pay a special blessing on this ward of Alderman, God, for the privilege what they've got, for the job they're assigned in their hand to undertake, to do the work for the community, for the city, and for the state. Bless our leader here. I've observed my own one. Bless him also, God. In the name of Jesus, give us the mind to do what is right and help us to understand, Lord, what we're doing. Give us the victory through your blood. Without you, God, we can do nothing. Give us understanding and the knowledge and the wisdom how to do right and do our job. Bless us now in Jesus's name. Thank God.
Pastor Brown, that was a beautiful prayer. We will be suspended with our regular order of business to take up our Courageous Resolutions Calendar. I move for adoption our Courageous Resolutions Calendar and attain the second. Second about Alderman from the 20th. Alderman from the 4th, you'd like to approach the dais.
Well, it's enough of us in here to say good morning back. Thank you, Smith. It is my honor and my pleasure to present this resolution to a gentleman that serves as my surrogate father for many years. He's a friend of the family's and he's an honorable man that I adore and we want to present him with this resolution today, Pastor Oscar Brown Senior. I'll read the resolution since Donna can't read it for me. Whereas elder Oscar Brown Senior joined the United States Coast Guard June 10, 1941, he transferred to the Navy in New Orleans, Louisiana. After completing his training, he boarded the troops carrier USS Wakefield traveling all over the world during World War II. And whereas after serving five years and four days, he was honorably discharged with the rank of Seaman 1st Class on June 14, 1946. And whereas he received the following ribbons: American Area, European, African, Middle Eastern Area, and a World War II Victory Medal. And whereas Pastor Oscar Brown celebrated his 90th birthday earlier this year, and during his lifetime, he made countless contributions to make our world a better and safer place. And whereas World War II, Mr. Brown distinguished himself in the service receiving several medals for valor and bravery. And whereas Pastor Brown, along with his wife, the late Mother Annie Pearl Brown, have a long and rich history as servants and members of the Church of God in Christ. And whereas Pastor Brown has overcome many obstacles, and now he continues to serve by guiding the congregation of Maranaca Church of God in Christ for the past 32 years. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize Pastor Oscar Brown Senior. And we wish him continued success, achievements, and accomplishments, and we further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and prepare the commemorative copy to the end that we may be presented to our honoree at this time and placed deemed appropriate by the sponsor, Alderman Samuel Moore. We also would like to add Alderman Terry Kennedy to this resolution because Oscar Brown, elder Oscar Brown, lives in Terry's Ward. Elder Oscar Brown is my... he's the brother of the same lodge which is the Church of God in Christ. We are elders together in the Church of God in Christ. So one day I'll give you a message. Terry Kennedy, would you please step forward?
Okay then. Mister President, members of the board, it is my honor to say a few words on Pastor Brown. I've known him most of my life, since around age seven. And you know, when you live in a community with someone, all you know is that that's your neighbor or an elder in the community. I had no idea that he had the medals from World War II. But I just knew this, that he was an important asset to our community, that his contributions to making the 18th Ward a better place to live is admirable and meritorious. And so it is my honor to stand here today with this resolution and to honor Pastor Brown here by the Board of Aldermen this day in recognition of his great contribution to this community as an active member of various neighborhood organizations and efforts in our community. He has proven his concern and his love for the City of St. Louis and the upliftment of the entire residents of our community. It is my honor to stand here as we honor Pastor Brown here today. Thank you.
That was very touching, Terry. When I receive my honor, I want you to talk about me like that. That was absolutely adorable. I appreciate that. Pastor Brown, would you step forward? This resolution will put you in history in the City of St. Louis. I can't say it like Lewis Reed. Lewis Reed would tell you a lot of good words. As to where this will place you. Would we like for Lewis to place him in history? Come right on, Mister President.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Well, Pastor Brown, on behalf of the residents of the City of St. Louis, this Board of Aldermen and people all throughout this region, the people who have come your way and that you've had an opportunity to effectuate change in their lives, I want to thank you and also congratulate you. This resolution, although it's but a piece of paper, is indeed the highest honor that this board has to give. And what it does is that it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this moment. So 100, 200 years from now, when they research the records of the City of St. Louis, they will find amongst those records Pastor Oscar Brown Senior. And they will know that on this day, we felt so much about some of your many contributions that we paused in our deliberations to recognize, congratulate, and thank you for those contributions. So Pastor Brown, for the people that you have changed their lives, we indeed thank you and understand that we appreciate everything that you've done up until this point. Let's give Pastor Brown a big round of applause and thank you for the...
I'm really lost for always behind such a great introduction and such a great given to me this day, which I did not know was happening until my daughter told me. And I'm appreciative of your thoughtfulness and your love and your understanding, and I'm grateful for all that you've done for me. I'm grateful that you found it worthy of me to give me this proclamation today, because many have died and gone on and never had this presented to them in their lifetime. And I'm grateful to you, Board of Aldermen, and to the Chairman, and to my Alderman Kennedy and my friend Moore. Let me call him that way, Son Moore. I'm grateful, and I thank each one of you for what you've done and your contribution towards me.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our Courageous Resolution Calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye. What's happening?
Pepper, would you present the hat to your father, please? Elder Brown? No filibustering, just...
First of all, good morning. I'd like to thank each and every one, the Board of Aldermen and all the women, along with President Reed. Thank you for recognizing and honoring my father today. I want to present him with his hat so when he's out and about, he wears his hat with honor. I did 12 years in the United States Army myself, and I know when you sign that name, your name, to the dotted line, you're saying, "I die for this country at any cost." And I want my daddy, who turned 90 on March 9, to know we love him and we appreciate him.
Congratulations, Pastor. When you think about a World War II veteran, came back and been working throughout our community, helping people all throughout our community, that's amazing. Congratulations for everything. Introduction of our guest. Any introduction of our guest? Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, Mister Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest Steve Spreck from the Communication Workers of America, Al from the Firefighters, Celeste Reader from the Realtors, and Senator Harry Cottin.
Alderwoman from the 2nd.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Jim Sonderman, former Alderman and with the Water Department, and Kurt Scobie, the Director of the Water Department.
Alderwoman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today Sergeant Mike Frederick, Sergeant John McLaughlin, and Ronnie Hour, if he's here somewhere.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the 7th.
Mister President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my special guest today Charles Bryson, who's Special Assistant to the Mayor, and a new 7th Ward resident.
Alderwoman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today David Holmes, Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, and Anthony Lancia with AGC. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today, actually, a resident of the 11th Ward, Miss Stacy Klazman.
Welcome, welcome. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Mrs. Shirley Stennis of Amory U.E. and the Treasurer of the City of St. Louis, Mister Charlotte Jones. Thank you.
Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest Mister Kurt Scobie of the Water Division, the Brown family, Amory U.E., and AT&amp;T. Thank you.
We also have Brother Muhammad, and he has his son with him today. I forget, what was your son's name? What was your son's name? Excuse me? Deonte. Deonte, could you please stand? Deonte, let's give him a round of applause. Thanks for coming up, Jones. Alderman from the 10th, I'd like to wrap this up.
Thank you. The Alderman from the 4th asked me to keep it short after he spent the last 20 minutes doing a presentation, so... Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. Today is June 28. Not a big holiday in many days, but this is National Insurance Awareness Day. Now who do you think created this holiday? So not much going on today, but everyone have a safe fourth next week. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from 13, you recognize on approval of minutes.
Thank you, Mister President. I move to approve the minutes of the June 14 meeting.
Moved by Alderman from 13, seconded by Alderman from the 11th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
Dispense with line item 7. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informer calendars? Alderman from the 16th, you recognize.
Yes, Mister President. I move that we refer Board Bill 89 back to the Legislative Committee for further discussion.
Moved by Alderman from the 16th, seconded by Alderman from the 24th. Alderman, any further discussion?
No.
It's been moved and seconded that we refer Board Bill Number 89 back to committee. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Coon, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Krusten, President Reed, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman French, Alderwoman Krusten. 21, aye votes, two no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the 16th, and place Board Bill Number 89 back to legislation. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change, placing Board Bill Number 89 to the Legislation Committee.
So noted. That's the extent of Board Bills for Perfection Informal Calendar.
Would anyone like to take any resolutions off of any of our informer calendars? We would dispense with line items 9 and 10. First reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill 121, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy in ordinance pertaining to the boundaries of the Central West End Historic District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 122, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Kennedy in ordinance pertaining to transit sales tax directing the Treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 1 appropriating $10,000, $10,000, $10,000,032,500 from said sales tax for the period herein stated to the Bi-State Development Agency for certain purposes and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 123, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Kennedy in ordinance pertaining to transit sales tax directing the Treasurer to deposit funds received pursuant pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 2 appropriating $10,000,032,500 from the said sales tax for the period herein stated to the Bi-State Development Agency for certain purposes and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 124, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Kennedy in ordinance appropriating the sum of $20,65,000, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the Bi-State Development Agency for transportation purposes and further providing that the appropriation is conditional upon the Bi-State Development Agency supplying the Board of Estment and Apportionment and Annual Evaluation Report, further providing that in no event shall the Comptroller draw warrants on the Treasurer for an amount greater than the amount of proceeds deposited in the Transportation Trust Fund during the period from July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 125, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy in ordinance authorizing directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorably designate the 4,400 block of Cook Avenue as Sylvia E. Miller Way. Board Bill 126, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis in ordinance repealing ordinance 69295 and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor license for any currently non-licensed package or drink liquor premises, licensed premises, within the boundaries of the 19th Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 127, sponsored by Alderwoman Young in ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission, authorizing directing the City acting through the Treasurer in her capacity as supervisor of parking meters to issue a subordinated parking revenue bond in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,500,000, appropriating a bond registrar and paying agent in connection with the bond, approving and authorizing the execution of a supplemental trust indenture number three, a continuing disclosure agreement if required, and a tax-compliant agreement authorizing the negotiated sale of the bond and the execution and delivery of a bond purchase account, purchase contract, and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Housing Committee, Board Bill 121, to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bills 122, 123, 124, and 127, to the Streets Committee, Board Bills 125, and to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 126. That's the extent, reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following Board Bill was reported of the Housing Committee to the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill 86, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, in ordinance authorizing and directing the Mayor to enter into agreements with the National Association of County and City Health Officials for 2013 Community Guide Capacity Building Demonstration Program funded by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Title, Grant Title, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 87, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt in ordinance authorizing directing the Mayor to submit all necessary applications and to enter into agreements with the Missouri Foundation for Health Basic Support Cycle III program and authorizing the Mayor, upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment, to expend any funds received by said grants to fulfill the obligations of the grants and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 93, sponsored by Alderman Coon in ordinance to repeal ordinance 40429 relating to the regulation and restriction of prophylactics. The following bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee. Board Bill 83, sponsored by Alderwoman Young in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing directing the City by and through its Board of Public Service to enter into agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the commission to provide without cost to the City various roadway infrastructure improvements and reconstruction for the Park Over the Highway Project and Third Street Washington Ramp Reversal Project. Board Bill 120, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service establishing a multi-phase public works and improvement project for the design, construction, and various roadway infrastructure and safety improvement designated herein as the Van de Venter Transportation Corridor Project and containing a public work emergency clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
Dispense with line item 14. Alderwoman from the 1st.
Mister President and members of the board, I would request that Board Bill 116 be put on the Perfection and Formal Calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Place Board Bill 116 on the Perfection and Formal Calendar.
Said perfection informal?
Board Bills for perfection.
Perfection consent. Board Bill 71, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy in ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing directing the issuance and sale of one or more serious water revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $10,000,000 in order to pay and reimburse the City for costs associated with the extension, improvement, purchase, acquisition, construction, and enlargement of the City's waterwork system. Board Bill 91, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Kennedy in ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing supplemental appropriation amending ordinance 69154, commonly referred to as the City Annual Operating Plan for fiscal year 2012, 2013, appropriating and setting apart projected excess general fund revenues to address certain expenditures in the general fund for current fiscal year in the amount of $2,000,000 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 112, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and Alderman Bosley in ordinance stating the intention of the City acting through the Treasurer superintendent of Parking Meters to issue one or more serious bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2,000,000 in order to pay and reimburse the City's parking system for costs associated with the acquisition of Corporal 7 Building situated at 1014 Spruce Street and the subsequent demolition of such building and landscaping and improvement of site and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 105, sponsored by Alderman Coon in ordinance establishing stop sites for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Merrimack at South 38th Street and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 106... Board Bill One O-Six, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and Honors establishing a stop site for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on North Boyle at McPherson and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One O-Seven, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Honors establishing a stop site for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on South Boyle at Duncan and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on perfection consent calendar. Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Dispense with line item sixteen, Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of moving the following Board Bills to the third reading consent calendar, Board Bill Seventy-One, Ninety-One, One Twelve, One O-Five, One O-Six, and One O-Seven.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twentieth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers.
Aye.
Alderwoman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderwoman Young.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Honorwood.
Aye.
Alderman Wessels.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida.
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohen.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kristen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman French. Alderwoman Kristen. Twenty-four, I votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the eighteenth, and place the aforementioned bills on third reading consent calendar. Madam Clerk, third reading consent.
Board Bills Seventy-Seven, Eighty-Four, Eighty-Five, Ninety, I'm sorry, Sixty-Five, Ninety-Five, Ninety-Six, Ninety-Seven, Ninety-Eight, One-O-Four, Seventy-Two, Seventy-Three, Seventy-Four, Seventy-Six Committee Substitute, Seventy-Nine, Eighty, Eighty-One, Eighty-Two, Sixty-Nin- Sixty-Six, Seventy-One, Ninety-One, One Twelve, One-O-Five, One-O-Six, and One-O-Seven.
Alderman from the eighteenth.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move Board Bill One-O-Four to the, uh, third reading informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change, Board Bill One-O-Four.
One-O-Four.
Page eleven, One-O-Four to third reading informal calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from thirteen, you recognize on the motion for third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I move for third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar. I request previous roll.
It's been moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, sec- second by Alderman from the eighteenth. Any discussion? There's been a request, Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ca- am I, am I allowed to ask a question on one of the bills?
No, we would have to move it off of the consent calendar and move it, uh, to the-
In that case, can I request we move one of the bills off the consent calendar?
Which Board Bill would you like to move off the consent?
Just for the purpose of asking a question, can we move, uh, Board Bill One Twelve to the third reading calendar?
Ma- Madam Clerk, please make, we're move, move Board Bill One Twelve from the third reading. We have, uh, we are, Alderman, Alderman, this is, uh, i- if there's any objection to this, we cannot do this because this is not a, a timely motion because we were all, we were already in, in, and, but the vote was already moving before us. Uh, is, is there any objection to that? Is there any objection to that?
Yes.
There is, Alderman, Alderman from the nineteenth objects to that, so, so we won't be, we will not be able to move the, move the Board Bill on. It's been, it's been moved in the second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
This is to move?
It's been a request reported of-
What are we voting on now?
This is the third reading consent calendar.
Okay, thank you.
It's been moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, the second by-
Alderwoman Tyers. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Honorwood.
Aye.
Ald- Alderman Wessels.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. You say aye?
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohen.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kristen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderman French. Alderwoman Kristen. Twenty-four, I votes, one, no vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the thirteenth, and third read and final passage of aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossments.
Board Bill One Committee Substitute, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Kennedy, the budget for fiscal year two thousand thirteen through two thousand and fourteen and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill Number One.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for final passage of Board Bill Number One.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, and entertain the second, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Please proceed, Alderman.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved in the second, that we third read and final pass the aforementioned bill. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers.
No.
Alderwoman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Honorwood.
Aye.
Alderman Wessels.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida.
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
I didn't hear it. Alderman Ogilvy.
Pass.
Alderman Cohen.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kristen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman French. Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kristen. Twenty-four, I votes, one, no vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, and third read and final passage, Board Bill Number One Committee Substitute.
Board Bill Number Two Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and Honors approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for nine oh one through twenty-three Locust Street, four sixteen North Ninth Street, and four twenty-one North Eighth Street and containing a severability clause.
Alderwoman from the seventh, you're work, recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill Number Two Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for final passage of Board Bill Two Committee Substitute.
Move by Alderwoman from the seventh, second by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers.
Aye.
Alderwa- Alderwoman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderwoman Young.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Honorwood.
Aye.
Alderman Wessels.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida.
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohen.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kristen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman French. Alderwoman Kristen. Twenty-four, I votes, one present.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderwoman from the seventh, and third read and final pass, Board Bill Number Two Committee Substitute.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment and final pass.
Report of enrollment committed.
Board Bills. Seventy-Seven, Eighty-Four, Eighty-Five, Sixty-Five, Ninety-Five, Ninety-Six, Ninety-Seven, Ninety-Eight, Sixty-Six, Seventy-Two, Seventy-Three, Seventy-Four, Seventy-Six Committee Substitute, Seventy-Nine, Eighty, Eighty-One, Eighty-Two, One Committee Substitute, Two Committee Substitute, Seventy-One, Ninety-One, One Twelve, One-O-Five, One-O-Six, and One-O-Seven.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix a signature here too, to the end that these may become law. We'll dispense with line items twenty-one and twenty-two, miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none. Tuesday Ways and Means Committee meeting at nine a.m. in the Leisure Room. Housing Committee meeting also on Tuesday at ten a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Public Employees Committee meeting eleven a.m. in the Leisure Room. Public Utilities Committee meeting at six p.m., six p.m. in the Kennedy Room.